First, we're gonna have invocation by Pastor Alicia Perry, I believe, at Our East Church. Thank you Pastor Perry.
Good afternoon. Let us pray. Dear Lord our Father, we just come before you, Lord, with a heart full of thanksgiving and praise. Lord God, we ask that on today, Lord God, that you come into the midst of this meeting. Lord, we ask that you touch each and every commissioner, Lord God, and each leader that is represented in this room on tonight. Lord God, we ask you to give them the wisdom and knowledge and understanding, Lord God, to make decisions concerning our county. And Lord God, to keep our county safe, Lord God, and give us the things that we need, Lord. Lord, we ask you right now, God, to help them to know the things that are in need of. And Lord God, to find ways that will cause us to prosper and cause this county to grow, Lord. Lord, we just ask right now, Lord God, that you just continue to bring them into a place of unity. Touching each, touch each and every one of them individually, and then touch them to come together corporately, Lord. Lord bless every leader represented in this, in this room. And Lord God, we ask God that they all come into one mind and one heart, Lord, that they will bless this community, Lord. Lord, we just give you praise for the decisions that will be made on tonight, that they will continue, Lord God, to bring light into this county. And Lord God, we thank you for the opportunity to serve, Lord God, and the opportunity, Lord God, to declare who you are in this county. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor Perry. Right now, we're gonna have the reorganization of the board. First, it'll be the election of chair.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I wanna say you've done an outstanding job, and I'd like to nominate you to stay as chair of this board because you do such an outstanding job. And, and move forward with it. I'd like to spend my last year if you was chair. So I'm nominating you as chair.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you.
Don't get your head too big now.
I try. That's the least, that's the last thing, cuz it's, it's a hard place. Um, right now is the election of the vice chair.
I'd like the nomination, Reese Fain.
I'll second that motion.
We got a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you for working. She's vice chair. Um, next, we're gonna adopt the schedule of the holiday. If you look, you can see you got the schedule. So I need a motion to adopt the holiday schedule.
So.
I'll second it.
We got a motion in the second and discussion. All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Eyes have it. Next, we will have approval of the Board of Commissioner meeting and work session schedule. You got it? That also is attached in your agenda.
And Madam Chair, I just wanna make one quick comment. Since you'll remain as chair, we'll probably have to make some revisions to the work schedule because of the Board of Trustees meeting with the Community College. But we'll change them at that, when, when, when it's time to change them, okay?
So Renee, are you saying that we don't need to vote on that?
Uh, no, adopt as it is now.
Yeah, we can go ahead and adopt it. She said.
Please to approve.
Board of Commissioner meeting. Work session.
Meeting, schedule and work session.
Second.
We got a motion in the second and discussion. Did you have a discussion? Did you have a? What you, did you need to say something? You was trying to point out the third. Oh, you said, what is it? July the third? No, the July the fourth is, oh, yeah, July the third. It should be July the fourth for Independence Day, cuz we just said holiday. Where you got?
We celebrate on the third. It must, is it on the Friday?
Okay, she was just pointing out it was on the.
Oh, yeah. Mm-hmm. That's our holiday. That's the day we celebrate. Mm-hmm.
Alright. So do we have a motion?
Yeah, motion in.
In a sec, okay. All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Here and now, I have it. Next, we're gonna have approval of the Public Official Employees Bond. You also have that attached in your agenda. So we need a motion to accept.
I'll make the motion.
So we, we closing the deal this year. You got a motion?
Second, I'm sorry. I'm trying to look and read it.
We got a motion in the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Eyes have it. We have public comments. We got two. We got Steve Lyles. Please state your name and your address when you come forward.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Steve Lyles from Bobbit Road, Vance County. I wanna say thank you all for your service, Madam Chair and Madam Commissioners and Sir Commissioners. However you address your official, I wanted to be correct, but anyway. I worked for Vance County for twenty-seven and a half years, been retired. February first would be fifteen years that I've been retired. And every year, near the end of September, we'd get a letter from county administration telling us when they're gonna have the flu shot. For the first time since I've been retired, I did not get any information, was non, not contacted about flu shots. So finally, last week, I got my flu shot on my own. That's just one little thing I wanted to point out. Back in June, they were running the water line near my house, and I had paid a hundred and twenty-five dollars seventeen, eighteen years ago to Kitchell. It's time for the water. I had never heard a word during that time. I came to several commissioners meeting in the last five years to try to keep up when they were gonna do something down there. And would ask Dan Brummett every now and then how it was going, what was going on. But finally, when they were getting ready to run the line across from my house, and I had been talking to my neighbor Randolph Wilson, who had also paid a hundred and twenty-five dollars. He had never heard anything. But luckily, his daughter lived behind him, and she had gotten letters with all the information on there, and he kept me informed about, you know, what was gonna go on. So finally, when they were digging across from my house, I went out there and asked somebody. I said, uh, am I gonna get anything for the money I paid? And he looked at me and he said, uh, I said, I live right there. He said, I tried to call you last week and couldn't get you live. Cuz I have the answering machine, and most time we're at home. And anyway, he went ahead and put a flag in my yard, and then that night was a meeting in Kitchell on the Water Association. I went to that meeting. County manager was there. Mr. Brummett was there. Frankie Noble was there, and two or three from the Water Association were there. And Lawrence Pulley, the only one besides me there, and he just wanted to know about a fire hydrant near his house, right near where they were. And I asked a few questions and learned a little more, because back when I paid my money, I was on the Bear Pond Fire Department, and I knew how important it was for fire hydrants in your area to help you with your insurance rating at home. Anyway, since then, insurance rating had dropped, and I have almost eighty gallons a minute on my well, so I don't need county water. I almost have an Artesian well. So when they came back two weeks later or so, and we're getting ready to put the water line under the road, I went out there, I said, I don't, you don't need to put it under the road. I don't need the county water. The guy comes back to my door, said he called Frankie Nobles, and Frankie Noble says, no, you pay for it. You gotta get it. So whatever, they went ahead and did it. And when they did it and dug it, they cut my phone, my phone line in two. And the guy that was working at their supervisor, and said he used to work with a company to put down lines, and he used electrical tape and taped my phone line back together and buried it in the ground. And we have yet to get that phone line repaired, replaced. I have had the phone company come out, and the guy says, oh, you gotta get you that new line. He never did put in for the new line, never had gotten a new line. Our phone's got static and noise in it, and we're having a hard time getting anybody to fix it. I just wanted to share that with you all, because if it doesn't get fixed, there'll be a lawsuit on somebody's hands, and I don't know who.
Mary Susan Williams, please state your name and your address.
Good evening. My name is Mary Susan Williams. I live at one oh nine West Lake Drive in the city of Henderson. Um, good evening. I'd like to take a few minutes to talk about taxes. As you heard last month, the large increase in taxes has been very difficult for some, problematic for others, and devastating to some. It's time to start thinking about how to avoid any increase in tax next year, drawing money from somewhere other than placing the burden on the taxpayers. It was implied you would reduce taxes last year, and that did not happen. Even though the tax revaluation coming at the worst possible time, many people were still left high and dry without any idea how to go about verifying facts about their property to see if the evaluation was even accurate. It is a daunting task. It is something most people cannot do without assistance, and most people pay it because they don't know how to challenge it. But it's your responsibility to make sure the people you hire can do their jobs accurately. I do not believe the burden of proof should be paced, should be placed upon the taxpayer. For the most part, the people you hire should be given tools to produce a somewhat accurate valuation of a property. Especially when our tax rate in the city and county increased tremendously. The decision of our city council and county commissioners to substantially raise taxes has brought hardship to many people in our county. Our elderly, many of them living on a fixed income, have had to do without. An extra two or three hundred dollars a month might not mean much to some, but to others, it means making a difficult choice between food, medicine, or paying bills. Please be responsible this year as you work on the budget and take into consideration how you can help these people who are struggling. A question I often get asked is why are Vance County taxes so high? It's a question I can't really answer, but as our elected officials in charge of making the best decisions for the people you represent, I hope you commit to making things make sense. And promising to keep the interest of the citizens of Vance County at the forefront of all the decisions you make this year. Thank you.
Right now, we're gonna do the appointments, but we're gonna switch a little right here. We're gonna ask Sheriff Rainey to come forward.
And so while the sheriff is coming up, Madam Chair, I would like the opportunity to provide some context and some history as to how we got to where we are today. Um, so I think it's important, like I said before, to provide history and context before the, um, so the sheriff can have a conversation with you all. I feel it's prudent to mention the below items because they all relate to liability and risk for Vance County. As your manager, liability and risk are most important to me, and I want to minimize exposure as much as possible. The reasons below are why I chose to hold the new enterprise county vehicles that the sheriff's office uses for operations. I understand that I have no authority to enforce any policies within the sheriff's office. But I do want to mention that these vehicles are not budgeted in the sheriff's office budget. They are budgeted in our budget, which within, which in, within the general fund, but it's in central services. So it's not in the sheriff's office budget. So let's go back to April of twenty twenty-five, when we received the order to depopulate from DHHS due to the detention center's conditions and staffing issues in the detention facility. And DHHS specifically stated that the detention center jeopardizes the safe custody, safety, health, or welfare of the individuals that were, that are incarcerated there. July of twenty twenty-five, there was an increase in liability insurance due to the order from DHHS for the detention center, but also due to child welfare assumption in DSS. So the increase amount was eighty thousand dollars in July. Um, let's fast forward to August of twenty twenty-five. In preparation for the new county vehicle and maintenance policy, which was adopted at your September meeting, county staff reached out to the association to see if our auto insurance allowed children and family members to be transported in county vehicles. Their response was, we do not recommend it unless absolutely necessary. There is some added risk and exposure since if an accident occurs and the county is at fault, then the county would be on the hook for injuries or deaths to the passengers. After implementation of the policy, the sheriff expressed his concerns with me in relation to the policy. Assistant County Manager Jeremy Jones and I met with him at that meeting, and he advised me that the only issue that he had with the new policy was the transport of family and, family and children. Um, he, he did advise me that he was not going to stop them from transporting their family and children because they've been able to do so, and that he would lose staff members if that one particular benefit is taken away. And so I guess I see the issue totally different than the sheriff. I don't want any added liability for the county when the historical liability since April of twenty twenty-five with the detention center has cost the county two hundred and twelve thousand dollars in repairs to the jail, six hundred and ninety thousand dollars in emergency pay, and an upcoming two million dollars in jail renovation. So I just, I just need to be able to say that before the sheriff speaks. Okay, Sheriff.
Madam Chair, can I ask her?
Yes.
Couple of questions. I, I just wanna make sure I understand everything and try to break it down in dollar and cents.
Mm-hmm.
Eighty thousand dollars is for what?
Um, liability insurance increase because of the issues in the detention center and DHHS child welfare assumption. So our liability insurance increased by eighty thousand dollars per year moving forward.
Is that just for this, just, is that just for this idea of them being able to do that in the sheriff's department?
No, it's because of the issues that we've had in the, in the detention facility.
Oh.
Uh-huh. The DHHS order that came down to depopulate, but also child welfare assumption of, I'm sorry, DHHS child welfare assumption of, of the authority over the DSS director. So two different things.
Did, um, did the payout of the, the million dollars bond have anything to do with it?
Uh-uh, no, sir. Mm-mm. They specifically said it was for the detention center and child welfare assumption in DSS.
So you said two twelve, you said two hundred and twelve?
And repairs.
Repairs, and the two, and two hundred, two million for what?
Um, so that's how much we're gonna spend to repair. Yes, ma'am.
Two hundred and fifty is what we're gonna, okay.
To repair the facility. Yes.
And this eighty thousand is per year going forward?
Yes, ma'am.
What, I, I'm still. Is, is a problem about kids riding in county vehicles?
Uh, county vehicles, period. Yes, sir.
And that, that cost to us for kids riding in county, county vehicles in the sheriff's department is costing us how much money?
No, so it's not a cost associated with that. The cost is associated with, um, with DHHS and the depopulation order for the jail.
But we've also had a pause since the nineteen eighties of, of no kids in cars, if I'm not mistaken.
No, actually, at one time, the county allowed it. Employees were able to sign off on a waiver.
But they went back and redid it and voted against?
Yeah, in September, you all approved the policy that said no family members can be transported in county vehicles.
I, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
When was that?
September. Okay, Sheriff, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, uh, Madam Chair, Vice Chair. Congratulations on your position and you holding the seat, Ms. Fains. I sent you all an email out, and this is nothing that I created. I truly believe that North Carolina Sheriff's Association and their attorneys and legal counsel, with decades of years of experience, publicated this and furnished it for one hundred sheriffs as a guide dealing with county commissioners and the county manager and assistant county manager. I'm not boasting that I am the sheriff. Everybody knows that I am, and I thank God for it. But the rule said that the Board of Commissioners nor the county manager has authority to enact on the sheriff's budget to change once the budget's been enacted for that current fiscal year. I agree with the county manager, which, and I realized it would be a good decision that I surrender my budget for the eight cars that the county board of commissioners approved me to have every year. Colonel Taylor made the motion, and the rest of the board agreed that sheriff office would receive eight cars every year. After talking with Renee, and we thought it was a good idea that I surrendered that, and it would save the cost for the county as they went to the enterprise to buy more cars at bulk, and I agree with that. So to say that those cars are not issued to the sheriff office because they belong to the county, I don't think that's fair. I really don't think it's fair, cuz I surrendered that, knowing that I will possibly still get new cars. Yes, they improve. Not only they say I will get eight cars, they said I will get eighteen and nineteen cars. They found out that I only got thirteen cars. I'm fine with that, too. That's all I needed. But out of that thirteen cars that's supposed to rotate out of the sheriff office, I have six of them that have over a hundred and thirty-one thousand miles. If we continue to operate those cars, they're not gonna be any good for resale. They're not, they're, they're dangerous. Uh, they will be hazardous to my people to continue to drive them. Uh, they'll be hazardous for the community if the officers not be able to respond, not having cars. For, to, you ought to hold those new cars simply because the sheriff disagreed with the county manager? I think that's wrong. I really do. I think it's a disservice to the citizens of this, of Vance County. I think it's a disservice to my officer's safety, and I just think it's wrong.
For sure. But you, but you saying it's cuz the issue's not the cars. You get in the cars, but the issue is that your employees driving the cars with their, your children in the cars. And that's a liability to the county.
Ma, madam?
Yes.
Each and every day we operate those cars as a civil liability risk. Each and every day, we transport up to a thousand people a year or more. They're not deputy sheriffs, they're not law enforcement, they're not paramedics, they're not county employees. We do all types of escorts and transports. Even if we went to a basketball game or sporting event, if a child's left there and their parent's not there at a particular time, we take that child home.
But that's business related, right?
That's, that's still a risk.
Yeah, but it's business related.
Still a child does not, it can, that's.
But that child would be covered per our insurance. We're talking about personal use of county vehicles. Transporting your child to school is personal use.
Do you not realize the community service it serves? The community service, that patrol car being in line at school? I, I, I think.
Let me ask this. When you transport, the things that you just mentioned, those are duties and responsibilities that the office carry out, right?
No, it's not. It's not a responsibility to take children home. It's not, it's not our responsibility to take children home. We could sit there, I'll wait for a parent to come pick them up. A, a person break down beside the highway, and we take them home. That's not our responsibility. We have a duty and responsibility to call the record service and make a phone call to have someone pick them up, but we take them home. Are we gonna stop doing it? We're gonna start catering to the public and their needs? I, I mean, I, I get it and understand it, but we, we only have a couple deputies to drop their children off. And I know y'all tired of hearing that, that broken record, well, you've been doing it for forty years. Well, we gonna stop today. We have, we have.
The county attorney said.
As been pointed out, all of those things, Commissioner Kelly, would be considered performed in the performance of their duties. Personal use of a vehicle is not something that I can support.
That's what I was trying to get.
Personal use of county vehicles.
Dude, that would be the duty of the office and everything. But what I can't get over Curtis.
Well, well, let's, let's not get wrapped up between duty, responsibility, and perform in the process of performing their duties and responsibilities. I think that's the technicality that the sheriff was trying to, to distinguish, is he's saying it's not their responsibility, and we're not saying it is. But when you do that in performing your duties and performing your job, that is done professionally as part of the services. When you pick up your wife or your children and take them to the grocery store, to school, or for whatever personal use you're gonna use that county vehicle for, that is different and is treated differently.
But the bottom line is that the county is trying to enforce me to follow their policy, and I said that I will not. The county cannot enact on the sheriff's office to follow their policy. Like I told, um, the county manager, her and I went over, we're about forty, fifty bullet points, and there was some yays and there's a nay. And we got to this one bullet point that, that I, I agree, I said I was not gonna move on it.
For sure, it's a liability to the county. It's a liability.
I can't, I've been here forty years. I don't recall the first incident where a deputy sheriff's been involved in an accident with a fam, one, maybe one, but not with their child.
Well, nobody leaves home to have an accident.
That, that's true.
Well, nobody leaves home.
That is true.
Accident. So we never know. That forty years, tomorrow could be a day.
Okay.
So nobody leaves home, nobody, interpret they're gonna have an accident, but it can happen.
Sheriff, what worries me, let me tell you what worries me. This is opening a big can of worms.
Yeah.
I wonder how many people, how many farmer have kids, and they go run the fire trucks to the schools?
Right.
Wonder how many people are in the inspections department that drive those cars? You just, you're, you're just going down a road, you can't stop. And, and you need to get it, you can't stop it.
And I've reached out to several other county managers, and, um, the, I believe I got response from five or six, and most of them said that their sheriff agrees not to transport children.
Did you get to the counties and surrounding us?
I did. So Nash, um, Nash Edgecombe, um, Granville, I didn't get a response back.
Franklin?
Um, Franklin. I didn't get a response back from Franklin.
Warren?
Uh, Warren, they do not allow it.
They do not allow it?
They do not.
It's very.
You found any county anywhere that does allow?
I think it was, um, it was Rockingham, I think.
It's quite a few, uh, Mr. Hester.
Uh, the majority do not.
Quite a, it's quite a few. Majority of the sheriff do still allow it.
But we, this, this, this road's been down in the nineteen, uh, before with this, not this board, but another board and another sheriff. Yeah, I, I was on, I was talking to the people today, and this has come up before, and it was turned down.
And my concern is our insurance recommends that we don't do it. That's my concern. It's just a liability for the county.
Let me tell you something. What I don't get, if I was a sheriff, and I need to transport, the sheriff's car, and I need to transport my kids to school, I would go drive the car to my house, get out of the car and drive my own car, and take my kids to school, and come back and get in the car. You can do that. I, I can't, I can't understand why.
Because there's so much downtime. If they're rep, if they're required to be working.
Time, Curtis, then they have the liability of putting some, my child in the sheriff's car.
Or make arrangements like everybody else's family have to do to take their children to school.
My, my question is, why now?
We did, but this was passed back in September?
Yes, sir.
It ain't just happened today.
Well, and, and the previous policy never said we could transport children.
Yeah, you.
It never said that. It never said that it was okay.
You can speak.
Apologize me. Sheriff, you, you wrote in the, the thing that the county has budget authority. But the county, other than budget authority, has no authority over any of your policies.
That's, that's correct.
Just on state law?
That's state law. North Carolina statute, yes. They have no authority to enforce the policy upon the sheriff's office.
And, and you do have a vehicle policy. Is that correct?
I do, we do have a vehicle policy.
Okay, and that policy was in effect when our insurance company reviewed, um, for rates?
This policy, this policy been effective since Sheriff Peter White was sheriff. I adopted the same policy that Sheriff Peter White created.
Okay. Um, I, I just, I have a problem with this board trying to direct the sheriff. He's an elected official. He is not subject to any of our policies other than budget. And, and I believe that we're making a bad legal decision if we try to start to impose policies on him, and, you know, you've got to.
So damn, what you're.
Play the game to give the money, to get the money.
Damn, what you're saying is make an exception?
I'm saying the sheriff has his policy. If the sheriff feels that.
Are you gonna let other departments do it?
No, we, we, we're, the other departments are subject to our rules.
I think.
Sheriff is not.
We're elected officials as well, and we have obligation to tax citizen dollars.
Yes, but you don't have obligation for, you don't have obligation.
We taking our tax citizens, citizen dollars to let, um, family members just ride up down the road, and we filling up the car.
But you don't have the authority to force policy on me.
I don't think it's about authority, though. You keep talking about authority. It's not about your authority. We understand that.
If you ask me to do something against my will, then you force, you overreaching your authority and telling me to do it.
I have a question to you.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, so if you were, one of your employees was, was transporting a child to school, and an accident happened, who would you expect to cover the expenses? You would expect the county, or would you expect them to use their own personal insurance to insure us?
Well, I hope it never happens, ma'am. But it, it can happen, yes.
So answer the question. You're talking about policy, yeah, so.
Well, the carrier or the insurance company.
So you would expect the county to.
If they're in a county vehicle, if your, if, if your, your child is riding in my car, my child's riding your car, if they have an accident, I expect your insurance company to cover it.
So county, county manager, what does our attorney say about this situation?
Say, what is that? Cuz that what he said?
And, and my next question is, while they're taking this child to school, if they get a call, what, what, you have a policy in place with they're supposed to?
Yeah, not to respond to emergency.
Keep going to school?
Not to respond to emergency traffic with a child, with a, with a passenger in the car.
So they don't have a duty to act? If they come up, if they come across in an intersection and someone has, someone that, I don't know, with, with a gun to the head, with, to their head, that's supposed to just keep going? And take their children to school?
That's a strange circumstance.
Sheriff, how many?
That's in the strange circumstance. If I'm walking, if I'm walking in the mall with my granddaughter, and some fool just acting fool, I'm gonna call nine one one. But if I can save someone's life, I'll put my granddaughter to the side and act as a law enforcement officer.
Do any of your deputies?
To use common sense.
Any of your deputies transport kids in marked patrol cars?
Excuse me?
That they use marked patrol cars to transport their kids in?
The deputy, I think it's two.
And that's, to me, to me, that's a target, but that's just me. I'm not gonna put my child in a marked patrol car in twenty twenty-five.
It's so different from forty years ago nowadays.
I, I, and I totally agree. It's nothing to say, but for you all to say and change and say these deputies can no longer on their way from home, going right by our school and can't drop their child off.
But don't you have the authority to amend their schedule i- in just in case they need to get to work a little bit later? As sheriff, you have that authority, right? You could do that.
I do, but they had to come back and forth, like Mr. Kelly said, drive your personal car, come back and forth. They had to do the same thing when time to pick the child up in the afternoon.
But you also say they can't even respond to a call if the child's in the car, and this is emergency, somebody.
If it's an emergency call. If it's an emergency call, I wouldn't expect none of my deputies to respond to anybody in the car. Was their child or your child?
But then you're putting in line for somebody else, cause in jeopardy.
Sheriff, there were some other issues that you reflected on in reviewing the county policy that was in our packet.
Yes, sir. Um, Nash County, uh, where the county board of commissioners tried to, uh, force policy on the sheriff. Uh, he took him to court and he won because of some about a P card, and, uh, the, the court upheld the sheriff, uh, office.
It looks like we're the stalemate as far as what to do, and I just, I want the county attorneys. I, I hate to put Johnson on the spot, I want, I want, I wanna know what we can.
You're not, you're not putting me on the spot. I do not support personal use of county vehicles.
What, but what I'm saying to you, this board, if we, whatever this decision we make doesn't mean the hell of anything, does it?
It does because this is not his budget.
And so what you're saying is, are we voting against the budget we put out?
No, sir.
Okay.
You are voting, you, there's nothing to vote against. At this point, I think that you would take a vote instructing your county manager to do something other than what she has done, if you wish for her to change the direction in which she's going.
If we don't, we just leave it alone?
That's correct.
So in essence, what you're saying is, we don't even need to take a vote, just leave it alone?
If that's the direction that this board wants, yes.
I, um, I'm concerned that we've got deputies out there with cars over a hundred thousand miles, and we're expecting them to respond to emergencies. And we're willing to put those deputies' lives at stake because we think that we have the ability to affect policy on the sheriff. That, to me, just does not make sense.
I know that we have the ability to affect policy on our assets, and it goes both ways. I do not believe it is this board making that decision, as much as this, as it is this board making it clear what they expect with the assets that they spend the tax dollars on, and when those assets are provided for the use, how those are to be provided, and the way and manner in which they are treated.
I still feel like my question hasn't, has not been answered. So when that call comes in, um, your policy would be for that officer to take that child home, or take that child on to school and then answer the call? Is that what you're saying?
No, he would call for, he, he or she would call for another officer to respond to that call. Calls are given out to officers according to their district and where they're assigned to, and it happens all the time, whether they, they have at lunch or on another call or serving a warrant, they will call another officer to handle the call. And I expect them to do the same thing. They have anyone in the car other than a law enforcement officer.
Curtis, when you look at this, how many officer, how many officers you have transporting kids? Two, three, four?
Three, three, I, I believe it's three.
We're doing a whole lot over there.
Sir?
We're doing a whole lot over there and everything. They can't go home.
I didn't bring this up, sir.
Go home and get.
It was fine with me like it was.
Listen, they can't go home and park the car, get their child in their own car and drive to school and come back.
Would you give them the time?
Will I give them the time?
You got this.
What, okay, I understand what you're saying, but what if somebody had another circumstance and situation that I had to do for someone?
When you say the term, thanks to him, but back him up, somebody back him up.
No, no, no. I'm just saying, if I do this for them, then what if some other deputy have a circumstance or a situation, and then I did not allow them to do it? Then I would be discriminating them.
That's the same thing as it, that's the same thing as other departments in the county.
I'm not a department.
Answer my question.
I'm not a department. I'm an office.
I understand, but you're asking for something exceptionally different.
I am not asking anything.
Asking to use cars.
I'm just telling you what's been upheld by the courts.
You're, you're asking to use cars that belong to this county for private purposes.
To, that was assigned to the Vance County Sheriff's Office.
Just open the can of worms.
That was assigned to the Vance County Sheriff's Office.
You would be willing to work with those officers, spend eighty times to get their kids to school, wouldn't you? In a private vehicle?
Not, it, not, it, not every day, sir, no.
You wouldn't?
If I have an officer working on day shift, five days a week, with one, one of them is an investigator. So I allow him every day to come in late so he can take his child to school, then I allow him to take a, a lunch break every day a certain hour to take his child home.
But you wouldn't, you wouldn't work with your, you don't work with your deputies?
To the best of my ability, but some days it may fall short.
Well, but, but don't you try to work with your deputies?
I do.
And look, you got some really good ones.
I do.
So, uh, is there any stipulations in place that they can't stop at, say, fast food restaurant? Or, and buy lunch or breakfast or whatever, or they can do that? You know, what is your policy concerning that?
If they was, if he was on the work?
They taking their kids to skid, to school, do they get to stop, say, at Bo James, buy a biscuit, take them on to school?
I'm not gonna lie to you, I imagine they probably have. I'm not saying, I don't monitor them like that, no. I'm not saying they haven't.
But they, but they allowed to. That's, that's my question. Are they allowed?
Oh, I have a question for, uh, county attorney. What if they sign a waiver?
What is what?
They sign a waiver.
You can't sign a waiver for personal use of a vehicle.
No, I'm not talking for personal use of vehicle. I said for the liability part. It seems like this is more concerned about the liability than it is for personal use. And I could find kinda hard, kinda gray areas as personal use. He is, she is on their way from work, or on their way to work and drop their child off. I don't see that as personal use.
So I'm only asking, Sheriff, do you keep track of those miles? Because underneath the, um, IRS guidelines, we are supposed to provide them with notification of how much of that personal use. So do you have your deputies who use these vehicles for personal use turn in those miles?
They're not using it for personal use.
But isn't that what transporting children and spouses is?
You're going from A to B, he's not going out. Here's her way to drop their child off. So what would that be?
But that's personal use, Sheriff. And if you don't track it, then that's something that I recommend that your office needs to start doing, because that is required and something that needs to be reported and provided, uh, each year.
Do, um, when we put the, I think those leases are all in central services, is that correct?
Every county vehicle is.
Did we allocate those to the sheriff?
No, sir.
So we bought vehicles with, um, sirens and lights on them?
But they're in central services, so nothing has been allocated into any, to any department, or to the sheriff's office, because they've been parked since they've come.
They're no good.
But they're not allocated to the sheriff's office.
Purpose of the sheriff's office.
They were bought for the county, county vehicles. They were not, no, they were bought for the county.
But they've been up for sheriff's.
They have, but they're still county, they're still county vehicles.
Enforcement that can drive a vehicle with lights and sirens.
Agreed, county vehicles, central services budget, not the sheriff's office budget.
Well, to my understanding, when we went with fleet management, that the sheriff's office would get a certain amount of vehicles. Is that correct?
Absolutely, yeah, and you also got vehicles that you were not aware that were ordered either, either.
Excuse me?
You, you got vehicles that you were not aware that were ordered.
I got a lot, a lot that I know that I was not involved in.
So let me ask another question. Do you make a distinction between them transporting only for educational purposes versus them transporting, say, for instance, to be involved in the school activities such as?
Yes, ma'am.
Football?
That's on the, on the, on their way to work and on their way, uh, home. They don't pick their children up, take them to a sporting event at night and stuff like that, no, ma'am.
Well, I don't mean the actual event, but I mean, like, some kids are involved in, say, on the football team, they're gonna have practice.
No, ma'am, they're not allowed to.
They still gotta get around home.
They're not allowed to drive that patrol car for that, dropping their children off, um, um, in the morning and picking them up in the afternoon.
County manager, what we're saying, if, if they already, if we already voted to not to, um, transport for, for personal use, we don't have to vote if we wanna leave.
Well, if you all don't make a decision on the vehicles, they just stay parked until the sheriff and I come to an agreement. Yes, ma'am. So no action needs to be taken unless you all want me to release the vehicles.
I, I will say.
Sheriff, I'm gonna make a motion that we allow the sheriff to have his vehicles and proceed so that the officers can, um, operate safely.
You got a motion? Is there a second? So we move on?
I'd like to say this in my closing, please. When the sheriff's office is no longer having the vehicles to operate safely, to respond to calls to service, urge the citizens in Vance County to call your county manager or your county commissioners. Y'all have a good night.
And make sure you add that you want coming to agreement with the commissioners. All right, um, Frank and Noble, Employees Engagement Team.
Y'all should let me go first. But anyway, good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
At our November the twentieth engagement team committee meeting, committee members selected this month's Employee of the Month due to the years of service to Vance County. The Employee of the Month is Kimberly Chaplin, who works for DSS as an income maintenance worker number two. Mrs. Chaplin has dedicated twenty-eight years of service to Vance County. Ms. Chaplin works hard for DSS, Vance County, and the citizens of Vance County. At this time, I would like to call up Ms. Chaplin and her supervisor, Ebony Mitchell. Mrs. Mitchell is filling in for Mrs. Hart, who is unable to be with us tonight. And Mrs. Mitchell is going to explain more in detail on Ms. Chaplin deserves this award tonight.
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Ebony Mitchell. I am the program administrator for, um, Economic Services at DSS. Um, I'm filling in for Cassandra Hart, the interim director, and I will just say that Kim, whenever there is something going on in the community and we need her to step in, she's always willing to do so. Um, whenever we have events going on at DSS, Kim is always there stepping up and saying, what can I do to help? So I will just say a few words from Cassandra. Kim works hard and will do anything to help all DSS employees. She is committed to the agency, which is proven by her twenty-eight and a half years of service. She continues to volunteer for additional tasks such as being the agency coordinator for Thanksgiving donations, Shop With The Cop, the Christmas Cheer Program, and a chaperone for events at the senior center. Kim is kind-hearted and selfless. When DSS had to supervise foster children in the agency, not only did Kim volunteer, but she even brought her waffle maker from home to make the children a hot breakfast. Kim deserves to be recognized for her endless community to the county, and I agree. So Kim, you are the Employee of the Month.
Oh, thank you. Um, next would be Logan Parsons, LKC Engineering.
Good evening, Chair and, and members of the board. Thank you for having us tonight. My name is Logan Parsons with LKC. Also have with me tonight Zach Bennett. Um, Zach's been the project manager, uh, helping on this Phase One B water project since it's been going on. Zach's actually gonna do the talking tonight related to the change order. If you have any questions, I'm here to help you.
Thank you, Logan. Good evening. Yeah, as, as Logan said, I've been helping out with the project management on the ongoing Phase One B water system expansion. Uh, tonight, we will be presenting the second change order for the project. Um, it incorporates miscellaneous additions and deductions to the contractor's scope of work that we've encountered over the past eight to ten months of construction. Um, starting off with, uh, the water meters that were included in the contractor's scope of work. So originally, uh, the contractor's scope included the purchase of two hundred and ten water meters to be installed, uh, by the county system operator. Uh, during the project, we learned that the county was able to get a, a better price, uh, by self-procuring the meters. And in March of this year, we requested from USDA, uh, to remove those meters from the contractor's contract and self-procure. Um, it was approved in March, and now we're just doing the final proper cleanup work and actually removing that cost from the contract. Uh, so in total, it removes two hundred and ten of those meters, which equates to, uh, ninety-four thousand five hundred dollars. Um, the county was able to get them, Frankie, it was for around eighty-six, eighty-seven thousand dollars. So it, uh, it accounts for a net positive of eight thousand dollars of credit towards the county for the, for the budget, uh, with that item. In addition to the water meters, uh, there's just, uh, miscellaneous quantity adjustments that we're capturing in this change order. Uh, throughout the course of a unit price, uh, construction project, some items are gonna go over, some are gonna underrun. Uh, there are a handful of items that have either finished installation and we haven't, uh, met the contract quantity yet, or in some, you know, have already gone over, or we are projecting to go over in the final months of construction. Uh, so this is just a little bit of cleanup work to remove some pricing and, and, uh, account for the, the future installation such that the contractor, uh, can get paid, and more importantly, that the county can get reimbursed for these funds to, to pay the contractor. Um, in total, the quantity adjustments will add forty-seven thousand fifty dollars to the construction contract. Um, another item that this change order is incorporating, it has to do with some, uh, soil, soil contamination that was discovered in the project area. Uh, on Bobbit Road near the intersection with Kitchell Road, uh, as we were digging, our inspector discovered, or they, they smelled some gaseous fumes coming out of the soil that they were digging for the water line. And, uh, at this point, we directed the contractor to stop working, cause that's obviously not a good sign. Um, as we dug more into it, we, we learned that this was actually a, uh, a leaky underground storage tank site that was identified by the state in the nineteen nineties. Uh, it was since closed out with the state, and everything has been, uh, taken care of at the state level. Uh, but to provide an extra level of mitigation for the county's water system, we directed the contractor to perform additional soil analysis on the soil and prepare a mitigation plan to make sure that there was no risk of, uh, contamination leaking into your water system. So they contracted with a third-party engineering firm and with a, a, uh, local landfill to, uh, uh, determine that plan. Uh, they presented that to us, and we repeat the pricing, uh, we agree with it, and that will add twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, uh, to the contract. Um, in, in that area, we are removing that soil entirely and properly disposing of it at that local landfill. And instead of using a plastic pipe, we're using a more, uh, ferrous material ductile iron pipe and specialized gaskets that is, uh, it'll prevent seepage into the, the water system. The, the final component of this change order has to do with the extension of a directional drill on Peter Gill, uh, Peter Gill Road. Um, this is, uh, if you're, if you're not familiar with the project area, uh, this is from in front of the Florida Marine Tank Site, and it, it's punched through the ground, it goes under the creek on Peter Gill Road, and it's gonna pop up right there across the road from the, uh, the IM facility where the industrial park is. Um, when the contractor was doing the preliminary investigation of the area and called the relocates in, they discovered that the right-of-way was extremely congested with existing utilities, Henderson Water, Henderson Sewer, uh, fiber, um, uh, additional cables underground, electric, and it was determined that it, it was just too congested to safely install. Uh, uh, and, and avoiding conflicts was, um, near impossible with how it was designed originally with the original survey. Uh, so we took a step back at that point. We coordinated with the contractor, the county, and, uh, local property owners, namely Florida Marine Take and the industrial, uh, park in the county. Um, we did a bore realignment, so we're pushing the bore back, uh, about fifty to a hundred feet. And then we are also shifting it outside of the NC DOT right-of-way to allow a, a safer entry and exit to avoid any conflicts with these utilities. Um, so overall, uh, actually, I'd like to bring something to your attention about this. Um, the change order, I, the packet that we shared on, I guess, last week was the original version, and the version that I'm presenting tonight, uh, there's a minor cost difference between what's in your packet and what I'm presenting. What I'm presenting is actually, uh, it's approximately twelve thousand dollars less than the number in your packet. Um, uh, there was some traffic control in the cost of the contractor that we were able to, to work through, and it was deemed not necessary. So it's been pulled out of the, out of the scope. Um, so, uh, overall, the extension of the bore adds seventy-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents instead of the number that is included in, in your packet. instead of the number that is included in your packet. So with all four of those items, with the deduct of the meters and the additions of the quantity adjustments, the bore, and the soil mitigation, this change order will add $51,987.71 to the project.
$51,000?
Yes, ma'am.
$51,000.
Yeah, $51,987.71. $71.71. And to give you an overall picture of the budget, accounting for the existing contracts for the water line and the tank project that was closed out, LKC's engineering services permitting, and these change orders, the project still has approximately $350,000 remaining in the budget, so.
Is contingency?
Yes, sir.
So what you're saying is, if I understand you right, if we vote on this tonight to approve this $51,000, we have enough money within the loan that we're doing with USDA to cover that?
Yes, sir.
Isn't that what you just said?
So it wouldn't be through the USDA. We've already used all the USDA loans. We're now on the DWI grant money. So the remaining funds are all 100% grant offered through the state DEQ.
This includes the $5,000 or $6,000. Is that, am I right?
That's correct. Yeah, the number became, what's that?
Correct.
After the change. That's what I'm saying. Still have that. Can I, can I, can I make a comment, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I want to recognize somebody that has been working with these people tirelessly. And I want to know he's been working on trying to get the right-of-ways, trying to make sure all these things work and constantly doing his job. He's Frankie Noe. And I'm telling you, y'all are working with Frankie on all these problems that you have and coordinating and working with him. And I just wanted to recognize him as doing, he recognizes everybody else.
Yes, sir.
I want to recognize him.
Yes, we definitely appreciate Frankie.
Now, he definitely is doing this, and I don't know whether the rest of the board knows or not, but how hard he's working to try to promote this and save this county money.
Absolutely.
I make a motion we pass this.
One more, one more question, just a comment. That $350,000 is all grant money. So at this point, we're seeing what else we can do in addition to what was the original spec.
You, you, you don't need to look at can do until we finish the project because you don't know what else you're going to run into.
Yeah, I mean, but that's what we're beginning to identify.
I don't mind doing that after the fact, but not before. But I'm making the motion. Is there somebody that'll second it?
Second.
Got a motion? Is second in a discussion?
Yes. The bid on these meters was done in February. Is that bid still good? Or have those meters been purchased?
Yes.
They've already been purchased? Okay, thank you.
We have all the meters on all.
Okay.
And one thing that we didn't mention is our, we had two different meters. Vance County runs one kind of meter, Kitchell runs another kind. So with the meters that we had chosen, it was going to put it at Vance County meter. So that made, if our link have to use two different readers to be able to read Kitchell. But we were able to get the I Pearl meters, which is a better meter. And now they can run, still test or read with one machine instead of having to do different types of meters in Kitchell.
Of course, I want to ask Frankie. He mentioned about the under the gas and everything in terms of running the gas and the gas lines you ran into and everything. What was out there? What was there?
Bobbit grocery.
Okay.
Bobbit grocery when they had gas tanks.
And still underground, that stuff is still under?
It's been removed. The state's done their part. But once we started digging, then there was a smell of gas. So they stopped immediately. And we're removing all that old dirt, getting all that out. We doing, doing a different type of pipe.
Okay.
Gaskets and putting it back so there'll be no, no risk to the public.
And I guess, of course, I want to know, okay, in terms of what you originally going to pipe, would it, because what was that, would it seep into the pipes and everything? Would create an environmental problem? What?
I guess it could have.
This is the gasket, this is more of a safety precaution than anything. You're using a new pre-gas, which is another grade that's more resistant to the building product.
Okay.
It's not like a gas in there. You're not thinking about tomorrow, you're thinking about 40, 50 years from now. Is that pipe, is that gasket so good? So this was more of a safety precaution. Let's switch it out to the building gasket that you want for a problem.
Thank you, okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? As have.
Just one question. Was that not supposed to be approved by the Water Board because we are the owner?
Is that in what?
Yeah. That's supposed to be approved by the Water Board? So we need to, need to do that when we go into the Water Board. We need to redo the motion when we go into the Water Board.
Okay.
So this motion here should not be approved.
Okay, okay. We can put it in the Water Board.
With you on it?
Need to go in the Water Board when we get to the Water Board. When we open up the Water Board, we'll take that motion back.
Okay.
All right.
Madam Chair, if I may add, these change orders require final concurrence by USDA and NC DEQ. So the motion should read approval pending final concurrence from USDA and NC DEQ or something similar.
Pending finding what? Approval pending what?
Approval pending concurrence or pending additional approval from USDA and NC DEQ.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I'll call Ms. Sherri Moss, Director of Planning and Development. Res zoning request ZMA 25003 and ZMA 25004.
Good evening, all.
Good evening.
Good evening. Try not to be before you long. My task here is to provide you with information regarding two rezoning requests from ZMA 25003 and ZMA 25004. They are actually side by side, two adjacent parcels going from Employment and Institutional Area, EIA, to Light Industrial, LI. And these parcels are actually located off of Highway 158 Business, tax parcel number 041302020. Owner of this parcel, Fay Ewen and Gala Strickland. And parcel 041302025, which is for ZMA 25004. And owner for that is John L. Capps and Sue H. Capps. And the applicant for this petition, for these two rezoning requests are Michael Natelli from Natelli Holdings LLC and Beth Trihos from Fox Rothschild LLP. And looking in your packet, just for the staff report, I'm going to briefly go through this. So with the background, both parcels are 36.41 acres. And both parcels have wooded sections located on them. And according to the Future Land Use Map Classification, both parcels are located within the Industrial and Warehousing Land Use Classification on the adopted 2010 Vance County Future Land Use Map. And with regards to the description of that, of the industrial and warehousing area according to the Comprehensive Plan, this is a new area in addition to the other three areas that we have here in Vance County. This is a new area for certain types of industrial warehousing that's located to the west of the city of Henderson, next to the West Vance Transitional Development Area, which you see in the orange that's located on the map that's provided on the staff report. And also the surrounding zoning areas that you have on it. You have Light Industrial, Employment and Institutional Area, Office Institutional, Residential Low Density, and Agriculture Residential. And though, and what you see in purple on your map, that's the Light Industrial zoning districts. And the EIA is in the blue. So per the application, their proposal, and this is based off the application that was submitted in the packet Exhibit A regarding Statement of Justification, the applicant states there are two adjacent subject properties that have submitted complimentary rezoning requests by the same applicant. The Vance County Land Use Plan designate these properties as Industrial and Warehousing Areas. Industrial and Warehousing Areas are appropriate for industrial development such as permitted, such as is permitted in the requested LI district. The LI zoning district provides more flexibility in the use of the properties than the existing EIA district for the expanded purposes of attracting more commercial and industrial areas. The LI district's expanded and more flexible uses are consistent with the land use plans intention to expand industrial and warehousing uses on the subject properties located within the new industrial warehousing area. The subject properties are surrounded by adjacent properties that are zoned LI to the west, north, and east of the properties. Therefore, the requested rezoning of the subject properties would be more consistent with and complementary to the surrounding area. As with regards of the intent of the zoning districts in Section 3.2.8 of the zoning ordinance, the EIA, which is the Existence Zoning District, this is established to provide suitable sites for concentration of non-retail employment and institutional uses and services such as medical, manufacturing, office, religious, educational, recreational, and governmental. Whereas the Light Industrial, per Section 3.211, which is the proposed, is established where the principal land use is for wholesale activities, industrial research, warehousing, light manufacturing operations, and some institutional uses. And also within the staff report, I've included the dimensional comparison of districts between the EIA and LI. And also included in here is a staff analysis that explains the procedure for the rezoning. Also, it covers the guidelines for all zoning amendments, which is also included in your packet with staff comments. And according to the Comprehensive Plan, you have goals that's also obtained in that. And specifically for these two rezoning requests, they both, both Goals 2 and Goal 4 were included for these rezoning requests. And based on staff recommendation, based on analysis above, staff recommends approval of the rezoning request from EIA to LI. The request is consistent with the adopted 1996 Comprehensive Plan with regards to Goals 2 and 4, accommodating economic development and growth and expanding economic tax base in the 2010 Future Land Use Map with regards to an industrial and warehousing land use classification. The request is also reasonable and in public interest as existing light industrial zoning surrounds the petition property. Planning Board recommendation, recommendation from their November 13, 2025 Regular Meeting, they voted unanimously to recommend their approval indicating that the zoning map is consistent with the 1996 Comprehensive Plan and as it relates to Goals 2 and Goal 4. And they found it reasonable and in the public interest based on, by promoting additional economic development activities within the county. In your packet, in addition to the application, you have your, I'm sorry, in addition to the staff report, you have your rezoning application. You have a deed that specifies the two lots with A2 and A4, if you saw that highlighted in there. The meets and bounds descriptions, the survey plat V307, your table of permitted uses that shows the comparisons between LI and EIA. And you also have your affidavit of service, which is a certification of advertising of the legislative hearing. You have the adjacent property owner listing, legislative hearing letter, photocopy of first-class mail envelopes of the owner and the adjacent property owners, photos of the posted signage, and legal notice to advertise in the daily dispatch. And also, there's a statement of consistency and reasonableness at the end of the packet. And I just want to add the surrounding properties of where the, all the light industrial zoning is. I believe they were recently, not too long ago, rezoned from EIA to LI. And this is just an extension of that.
So this, does it require a public hearing?
Yes, it does require a public hearing for you all.
Okay.
Yes. And I believe someone from Natelli. Yes, Beth is here, if you have any questions, either me or her.
Just the public hearing is not posted on the agenda.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah, I sent the legis. So do we need to do this at a different time? I sent the notes out. Okay.
But I hear what you're saying, you recommended that it be approved, right? But we got to go to the other steps first, right?
Yes.
So we got to advertise the public hearing first.
So I guess, a question. I know the petitioner came here tonight prepared for an answer. Is there going to be an issue that we need to schedule a public hearing at a special call meeting to keep a timeframe going for them?
If, if possible, we would appreciate the opportunity to be heard as soon as possible. And certainly, any, any input that you would have on our proposal this evening, we would love, love to hear.
Branson, with these, how fast can we do it?
We'll have to do a special call. Y'all will have to do a special call meeting.
We have to have a 10-day notice for public hearing, is that correct, Jonathan?
Yes, and it was, I mean, from my understanding, maybe I should have been clear, but it was, the notices were sent to the dispatch and everything.
So the only issue we have is we didn't post it on our.
It's on, yeah, it's not on the agenda.
But does that, does that public notice that was posted in the paper give us light to proceed tonight?
Letters went out to the adjacent property owners, too.
So we can proceed with the public hearing tonight? We can proceed with the public hearing tonight?
No, we cannot.
Cannot, okay.
But we don't have a 10, the 10-day wait is already, no, we would have, still have to advertise it for 10 days. How's that work?
We have to re-advertise.
Okay. Oh, okay.
So do we want to go ahead and technically schedule that?
Yeah. So we need, can we go ahead and schedule it?
We have to retreat on the 19th. Can we just do it for the 19th? Or do y'all want to do something that week? We can do it first thing.
I'd like to see us do it as quick as possible, even if we do it before the 19th. It's 10 days. What, 10 days and then it'll be the 13th?
Yeah, but I think it has to go to the paper, and it depends on when the paper can advertise it.
We can do it at the retreat?
I think it's going to have to be the retreat from a timeframe perspective. Oh, we can't get it published that quick.
What's Jonathan saying?
He said we can't get it published that quick.
It could run Thursday, 10 days.
The paper published it Wednesday, right? Because it wasn't Wednesday when it was first, second, third. So it would be the 13th, would be the 13th. Wouldn't it be the 13th?
So the fourth would be Thursday. And then, so the earliest you can do it would be the 14th.
Yeah, the earliest, I think we might be able to do it is that Monday or Tuesday rather than that Friday.
Okay.
I'd rather do it early. We can do, make it special.
Okay. So y'all want a special call meeting on the 16th or the 15th? No.
What works for you, Carol, in terms of what it'd be and what?
It's just 4 o'clock.
It's 4 o'clock.
I won't be in attendance. I'll be in Mexico.
You're going to miss, where you leave?
Okay, so the 16th.
On the 11th.
So we'll schedule it for the 16th?
Yeah, we'll schedule for the 16th.
16th at 4:00 PM.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll work on getting it advertised.
We apologize for what is in terms of the folks coming to get it approved.
Okay.
We're going to open the Water District Board, approve a meeting schedule.
Approve of the meeting schedule. For the Water District Board.
We got a motion. We got a motion, a second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? As have it. Monday Operation Report.
I just have one question. On bank service charges, there was a $19,000 negative expense, which was, I think the original budget was for $1,373. What is that item?
You said it's, which one is it? I saw it.
It's on page 142.
The bank service charge.
Yes, Stephanie's looking at it now. Can y'all go ahead and approve the change order while Stephanie is looking at that, Madam Chair?
Need to go back to the.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the change order for $51,987.71, subject to USDA and NCDQ approval.
Got a motion, a second and a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? As have it. I see it over here, but I'm trying to, I'm trying to find my page. Fix more problem being, fix more problem than you got to know. He's got one of one on the water. Right after, right after the schedule, the meeting schedule, it should be on the next page.
Okay, the other item is on the Operations Report. It showed for September, it showed two cross-connection checks, but in the year-to-date, it only showed one. So we just need to get that straightened out. That's an error.
Frankie, you got that? Okay. Stephanie, were you able to find anything? Okay. And Commissioners, it would be helpful once the agenda's published, if we can kind of know the questions that are gonna be asked, so we're not, yeah, it would be very beneficial.
Yeah.
So just so we're prepared.
Yeah. It saves time as well.
It does.
Where's the other one, Dave? Where's the other one? The other one you're talking about?
On Operations Report. Cross-connection checks.
It's freezing in here.
September.
Cross-connection, okay.
September and only one year-to-date.
Okay.
That just doesn't make sense.
Okay. Nick, go along with her finance to her report.
Yeah, okay, I was just gonna say, if you wanted to, I mean, there won't be any action that needs to be taken, so just let her continue to look at it, and we can provide Commissioner Brummett an answer after.
We'll just hold the water board open.
Well, I mean, it's just the answer of a question. I don't know that you need, y'all don't have to take action, so I would think it would be okay to close the water board. Is that okay? What you think, Jonathan? I don't think you have to be in a water board to answer a water question. Can we close the water board? He just had a question. They don't have to take action or anything.
Correct. Did they vote to take action on many of the?
They did already.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, yeah, you can close them.
Absolutely.
And we can move on, and Stephanie will continue to look, because we don't know how long it's gonna take.
Close the water board.
It's not.
Our next is Assistant County Manager Report.
And. And hold on for a second.
Yeah, we're not doing it.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, you know, I shared those emails with you last week about emergency services. I just wanted to read those two emails since the leadership change in emergency services. I just wanna, I think it's very important for you all to hear the feedback that we're getting from emergency services and, and staff thus far. So hold on for one second, let me find, had the email up, but then I. Okay, so, and this is two different emails, but I feel the need to, to share both of them. So the first email, and so since Jeremy assumed the duties as interim EMS Director, this is the first email. This was on October 24th, and it just says, "Good afternoon, I just wanted to take a second and reach out to you guys and tell the both of you thank you for listening and understanding the staff and making us actually feel appreciated. I look forward to working with you all and making the agency the best in the state. It will take time, but we will get there. You all should see the morale already. Again, we thank you." And then a Thanksgiving email came last week, and it says, "Good morning, just wanted to take another moment to say that the staff of EMS is very thankful for the both of you. In the last month, you guys have made it more enjoyable to come to work and to be a part of an awesome team. You guys are true leaders, and we appreciate what you all are doing, not just for us, but for our county. Happy Thanksgiving." I just wanted to share that just because we don't always, I mean, I don't look for credit or accolades, but it's, it's good to hear the employees are happy working here in Vance County, and we don't always get the thank yous. But I'm fine with that, but I know that we're moving forward, and that's just an indication to me, so.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm gonna report the EMS incentive plan. The incentive program will not only strengthen our current workforce, but also help attract new employees. Right now, we are the lowest-paid EMS agency among the surrounding counties despite being the busiest. This program gives our staff hope that competitive pay is attainable and shows potential applicants that Vance County EMS is committed to investing in its people and employing the best. It will motivate, motivate our employees to better themselves, which in turn will enhance the service we provide for the community. The program establishes clear goals, boosts morale, and encourages both professional and personal growth. Ultimately, it supports a holistic approach to delivering high-quality service to the residents of Vance County. This plan will utilize, utilize lapped salaries that totals $46,447.19. Our recommendation is to approve the incentive plan as well as adjust the budget for the plan going forward.
And do you just want to share with them how many vacancies that the agency had, just due to salaries and things of that nature?
Can you provide that, Chief Minus?
Yeah.
How many vacancies we have?
I think you had 13 or something, I don't know.
Due to salaries?
I'm sorry, I'm one of the division chiefs. Currently, we have 13 vacancies, probably be 14 very soon, because we have, well, actually 15, because the ones getting ready, two are getting ready to retire.
So these are lapped salaries, so it don't change, you know?
Yeah, we just need to budget for the higher salaries next year, but yeah, this is just lapped salaries, yes ma'am, so no additional funding.
No additional funding. All right.
Is this, this chart has been changed since this afternoon, is that correct?
Yes, it changed from 10%, it's supposed to have been 20% max versus 10%.
And then the 2% incentive with a max of five.
Correct, those.
Changes made to that.
Those are taken out as well, because we're not gonna pay employees for required positions for the job, required certification for the job, so we did take those out.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what do we?
You leave a motion?
Yes.
I make a motion, we go with this recommendation?
We got a motion, second. We got a motion, a second and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? As have it.
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Next, our County Managers' Report.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm not gonna read all of this, but the telework policy is, comes from, I believe, we discussed this in your October work session, and I believe there were some Commissioners that had some concerns about security, so I'll have Randall come up, just in case y'all do have concerns about security and what happened in DSS, but I do think that we are, we don't have any more security concerns anymore.
Good evening. Y'all have questions about what protections we'll have in place for the telework policy? One of the first things we're doing is we're separating, we used to have a single VPN that both employees and vendors used. We're separating those out, so the vendors are no longer using the same one that the employees use. That allows us to strengthen our protections for the employee policy without really inconveniencing the vendors that need access without certain steps that we can take with employees. We are requiring the county-provided security software that runs through our new system on every piece of equipment connected to the VPN. We're requiring full multi-factor authentication, and we're giving them the least available amount of access they should have. So they'll have only what they absolutely need to access when they're not here. They won't have the same level of access they would have sitting at a computer here on site. You have any other specific questions about it?
There was a clause in the policy that stated if there was damage to personal equipment, it would be an employee's responsibility. What personal equipment would they be using?
If they, instead of connecting to their wireless network, if they plug into a network, there's a power surge that goes through a laptop and damages their router or something of that nature.
So they would be using their individual laptops?
It'll be our laptops, but their internet, their network service, so their home router, their wireless equipment, if they do wireless, their spectrum router, bright, bright-speed router, whatever they're using for internet. I mean, that's really in there just to protect us in case something happens while they're physically connected to it.
Because I know in the past, they've used their personal computers because, in order to.
It will be up to each department on whether they want to allow them to use their personal computers. My recommendation is no, we will issue them a county computer. And I think all of the department heads I've spoken with agree with that, we will issue them county equipment. Regardless of what they use, it has to meet my security standards.
Okay, so we currently have enough computers, this is at no expense, no additional expense?
We currently have enough, either already purchased or in budget.
And DSS is the pilot department, and DSS already has laptops, department-wide, now.
One of the things we did when, due to the incident we had, is everything that we put back was a laptop, just in case we moved to a telework policy. And to make it easier to move staff around the building, so everything there is laptop-based. I think there's three desktops in the entire building, not counting the senior center lab. Those desktops are all connected to the phone systems.
And so the recommendation is just to approve the telework policy as written, and approve the Department of Social Services to serve as the initial pilot department and authorize the county manager to phase in additional departments as feasible and appropriate.
How long do you anticipate the pilot part lasting?
It just depends, because every department doesn't have laptops, so it would be a cost associated with other departments being deployed out. Because most of, what, what percent of departments would you say has laptops?
75%.
Laptops, yeah.
We're not quite 100% yet, but we are approaching that number.
Yeah, I would like DSS to be at least three months to see how it works.
Three months is the time.
Minimum.
So for the first one, can we just get a report back on how it's going with DSS?
Absolutely.
Three months before we start.
Absolutely, yeah, without a doubt. We'll watch it closely. Yeah, that's fine. So April, I'll give a report to you all of how it's working.
So is there any department that cannot be, you know, work, is there anyone?
I'm just thinking about that 25% that does not have laptops, so 25% is what Randall was saying.
I mean, regardless if they had, that cannot work from home, is there any department, but all?
All of, most of them, most of them can, office staff, yeah.
Their individual tasks and positions, not necessarily a whole department, but there are individual things that you can't accept money at the tax office window if you're at home.
Yeah. Yeah.
There are small things we have to watch with.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I make the motion.
Second.
Got a motion, a second and a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? As have it.
Thank you.
Okay, so the next item on my report is the revised EOP. So the Board of County Commissioners tabled the approval of the revised EOP due to questions and concerns brought up during the, at the November Regular Meeting. The Board of County Commissioners had the opportunity to email or come meet with the county manager in person by November 14, 2025, to discuss changes before the December Regular Meeting. There were no requests for in-person meetings or email requests for changes. I am requesting approval as written with the understanding that a more detailed review, such as minor spelling corrections or incorporation of Commissioner Brummett's recommended additions, can occur at a later date should the board wish to do so. And so the recommendation is just to approve the revised EOP as written.
So were any of the points that I brought up in the previous meeting?
No, sir, because.
No changes made on it, based on the comments I made?
It was not, because I asked you all to come in and meet with me, so we could document it.
Those points had previously been made in a public meeting and should have been taken care of. No, they were not?
No, sir.
Okay.
Because I sent you all the email asking to come in, meet with me, and actually, I asked you to send it to me in writing, I didn't get anything for you. So even though it was in a public meeting, I still requested it in writing.
I think I stated in the meeting that transparency is important and that those things need to be happening in public.
Well, if the board wanted to approve your changes, we could add those, if, if, if the board supports your changes.
My concerns are that particularly Ketchikan and Middleburg are not included in the plan.
And they were not included in 2019 when you all voted to approve it.
But that's, that's something that now they should be.
But we're seeking that this just could have proven that you all will work out the details and everything.
And that's my recommendation, yes, sir.
Because it's, what, it was 2019, and we let it go, and the things that need to be approved that can be worked out between you, Commission, and in-house folks, right?
Yes, sir.
I have a recommendation that we approve, approve the revised EOP plan as written, with the stipulation that any corrections that need to be made can be done and brought back to us.
Second.
We got a motion, a second and a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
As have it.
And the, oh, yeah, travel policy is next. The purpose of the countywide travel policy is to establish consistent, transparent procedures for authorizing, conducting, and reimbursing travel for county employees, county-approved drivers, elected officials, and appointed officials while performing official county business. It ensures compliance with the general statutes, including General Statute Chapter 159, and it promotes responsible fiscal management by defining allowable expenses, documentation requirements, and reimbursement limits. The policy outlines approval authority establishes uniform meal and lodging standards and identifies costs that are not eligible for reimbursement. It also includes safeguards such as reimbursement obligations for mistraining, audit requirements, and consequences for false claims. Overall, the policy strengthens accountability, protects county funds, and provides clear guidance for all travel funded by Vance County. The recommendation is to approve the Vance County travel policy as written.
Okay. Make a motion that we approve the travel and finance policy as written.
Second.
Got a motion, a second and a discussion? In discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? As have it. Thank you, we never had a travel policy, right?
It was like a one-pager, but we needed this.
Well, thank you, we did, we really did.
And the last thing is just an appointment of a deputy finance officer. Chapter 159 of the statute, General Statutes requires that the county appoints the finance officer, but does not mandate the appointment of a deputy finance officer. However, the statute permits the board to designate a deputy for the purposes of signing pre-audit certificates, authorizing disbursements, and performing other financial duties when necessary to ensure continuity of operations, strengthen internal controls, and maintain compliance with General Statute 159-25 and 159-28. When the finance officer is unavailable, I am requesting that the board formally appoint Alicia Campbell as a deputy finance officer of Vance County. And I won't read all that, because it's pretty explanatory, but although not required by the statute, having a formally-appointed deputy finance officer is considered a best practice across North Carolina counties and will support effective financial stewardship. This request is also highly recommended by the LGC, I'm sorry, it says LG, I apologize for that, LGC, since we are still on the unit assistance list, and the recommendation is to appoint Alicia Campbell as the deputy finance officer.
Who's Alicia Campbell?
She, she works in the finance office up under Stephanie.
When you go in, shoot to the right.
First door on the right, as soon as you come in through the front. And she does a lot with check processing now, anyway.
Make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, a second and a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? As have it.
Stephanie, you got an answer for us? Oh, okay, with, okay, all right, so we'll have to get that answer for Commissioner Brummett tomorrow.
Approval of this present agenda item?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Budget Amendment 21. Funds and forfeitures revenue. Where does that revenue come from?
So, good evening. So the funds and forfeitures we get from the clerk. So the budget amendment is just so that when we get those funds, and we have to dispart, we have ten days from us receiving them, to disperse them to the schools. So, um, I think last month, we got like a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, so we had enough that was already previously budgeted to be able to pay that out. But, because if it's not budgeted, we can't pay it out. So this is just so we can have the funds, so whenever we get money from the clerk of court, not saying that we will get five hundred thousand, but whatever we get, we want to be able to, to pay those out. So right now, I think we only have about, about thirty thousandths left, so we got another a hundred and fifty, hundred and, anything more than thirty thousand from the clerk of court and fines and forfeitures, we could deposit it, but it won't be budgeted for us to pay the schools, send it to the schools.
So does that mean that the court, um, fines and forfeitures are tremendously more than they have been previously?
Uh, yeah, when, yeah, just that last month was just a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars alone, yeah.
It's a good sign.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry, that's it?
Uh, there was one more question, I can't remember what it was.
Did you make a motion for the consent agenda? I make a motion to approve the consent agenda presented.
We got a motion for approval?
I'm still trying to find it.
You said a second? We got a motion, a second and a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Eyes have it.
I do have, um, oh, I'll take a minute.
Just one question on the cooperative extension report. And that's on, um, that's on the Adult Parenting Program, the Supporting Father Environment. It's on page three thirty-nine of the package. It stated that the next program would start in January of twenty-seven, was that a typo?
I know, we'll have to ask Waikia for you.
Get that information?
Yeah.
Because that was, uh, that program looked like it was pretty successful. And, uh, see, if it was gonna be another year before we had another one, we'd see if there were alternatives for that.
The program with the Dan?
It's the, uh, it's a Supporting Father Environment, it's Building Strong Families Together. Uh, and it's a program that the Extension Services created. They had, um, they were able to have twelve people in it, and they, all of them finished the program. And so it's a, it looks like it's a, from what I'm reading, it looks like it's a pretty good program, and something that we probably need to, to concentrate on, and I just wanted to make sure that, that we were gonna be able to continue it next year.
Yeah, we'll get the answer for you.
So, just as a FYI, the emergency pay policy for the detention center ended effective today, um, just because they ran out of lapped salaries, so that policy is done. They don't, they're at sixty-five percent utilization of their salaries for this year, and we still have to move a hundred and forty thousand dollars from the detention center to the deputies, um, to the sheriff's office. So the policy is done as of today. So they have comp leave and comp time as an option, as of right now.
That's in their salary, in their budget?
Mm-hmm, well, comp time, they don't get paid for it anytime. They'll take it off at a later date.
Okay.
And as a reminder, your retreat is on the nineteenth, but I still need, some of you haven't submitted your goals, so I need your goals.
That's it, and I give a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Me in the adjourn.